I'd like to call our meeting to order. Tuesday, November fourteenth, meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Like to record the attendance that all members are present. Like to now ask they stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the play.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the U.S. Republic, for its hands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to now ask for an approval for the current agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to now review the minutes from the October tenth meeting. Are there any notes or changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I now like to ask our visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items to come forward. Give us your name and your address and tell us what you'd like. Again, this is for items that are not on the agenda. Anybody? Okay, well, let's move on to our first case. Case number twenty-three, thirty-seven ninety-six, Spring Hill Suites. Madison.
Alright, we have an application from fifty-two fifty twenty-eighth Street, also known as Spring Hill Suites Hotel. They are requesting temporary storage of some containers on the property. And they have a project going on for remodeling and are requesting to be able to keep them on the property for the duration of the project. The timeline was not indicated to me, but I did ask the applicant to bring on an end date to us this evening, as well as a site plan indicating where they are located on the property. So here on our site plan, we can see that we have two applications. There are two hotels next to each other from the same hospitality group. So it's on the same site plan. We have storage on the backside of Hampton Inn and Suites, and then right now we're reviewing these two containers on the backside of Spring Hill Suites. They have indicated that they need the storage during construction. I will note that this is an administrative task or will be turned into an administrative task once the planning commission adopts that approval. So any questions?
Any questions from board members? Thank you. Is your representative from Spring Hill Suites that is available to come up and speak to us? And please give us your name.
Sure. It's Lisa Wedding. I'm the Regional Director of Sales for both hotels. So it represents elite hospitality for Spring Hill and Hampton.
Okay. Are there any questions by board members for Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa, do you know what a date would be, an end date? You would need these for? Typically, we like a time period.
So Spring Hill should be finished. Right now, the rooms are done. They're working on the lobby area. So right now, it's housing the doors and fitness equipment and everything because they were doing that. It should be the end of February.
So if we said-
March first.
So if we thought said by April one, you should be done and-
Oh, my stars, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Interesting. One is owned by Marriott or?
There are Marriott and one's a Hampton and one's a Marriott. So it, yeah, we're like competition. It's really crazy when we pull up with the shuttle and it has both on it at the airport. Nobody knows where they're going.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa. I'd like to now have a public hearing motion.
Move to go to public hearing.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody in the audience would like to come up and address this issue for our kind? Nobody?
Will be closed public hearing?
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed. Discussion among board members.
Mr. Chairman, it's a pretty common request from stores. And so I recommend that we approve the variance as requested to allow for the temporary outdoor storage unit no later than April first, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero approved. Thank you, Lisa. I'd like to now move on to case number twenty-three, thirty-seven ninety-seven. Hampton Inn, Lighthouse Lodging. Madison.
So we have a similar request for the next door neighboring hotel. They also are doing remodeling and this came about during enforcement. We found containers same as the other property. They're looking to continue the storage on the property until a date that I have asked them to determine tonight here with you. And they are on this north side of the site plan on the backside to access the property, or not residents. People staying at the hotel come around this side and this is the entrance. So it is tucked back behind some trees. And I recommended approval for this as well, as long as we can determine a date that they'll be removed by. Any questions?
Questions for Madison?
No.
Thank you, Madison. Lisa, are you representing them also on this one too?
So this one should be done no later than December fifteenth. So we are in the final stretch of this one. It's just adding, it's holding stuff for additional three rooms that we're putting in right now and that's all.
Question again would be, you'd be comfortable that by end of January, you'd be for certain have them removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you. Like to ask for a motion for-
Make a motion. We go into public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody in the audience or anybody online that would like to comment? Can I have another motion?
Take a motion. We close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor closing the public hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion?
Sounds very similar and I would make a motion that we grant the variance with the end date of February first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Member B. Let's say Lou. Go for it, Lou. Okay, Lou has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to now go to case number twenty-three dash thirty-seven ninety-nine, Epic Homes. Madison.
Just based on what we need to see. Okay, we have an applicant this evening. Epic Homes Troy Shrock with the Schrotenbor household at thirty-six to sixty Cherry Lane. This is in our farmland preservation district. They are on ten point two acres. The southeast corner of thirty-sixth and Cherry Lane. The applicant is requesting a variance for their side yard, which is the north side of their property for a pole barn. This is an application that requires two part approval with a variance and a special use permit. So tonight, we are just reviewing the placement of the structure. They are requesting to build twenty-one feet from the property line, which is considered their side yard. The accessory building is proposed to be seventeen feet tall to the midpoint of the roof. And according to our ordinance, that does require a forty-foot side yard setback. And they are proposing a nineteen-foot side yard variance then to have that twenty-one foot setback. The applicant has stated that the location is necessary for the ability to access the building in a wheelchair. And they did submit a narrative and that was included in your packet for you to reference. The parcel does not appear to have any steep hills, but to the east end is a little more slanted downhill with a wooded area to the far east. I did receive one letter of public comment that was included in your packet and then forwarded another one to you today via email. And then when we're considering our criteria for approval, we do look at chapter nine. Sorry, correction. We look at our findings of fact for considering a variance. So one of those is that there would be an exceptional or extraordinary condition that is inherent to the property in question that wouldn't necessarily apply to other properties in the same zoning district. Unfortunately, I did not find that this property has unique conditions. It is a large parcel with ten acres. And there does seem to be ample room to be able to build within compliance of the standards. And then the next finding that we consider is that if the exceptional or extraordinary conditions are not taken as a result of the action of the applicant subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance. So typically, you know, if you buy a home and it's in a location, you can't really control that. This applicant is in the process of building their home currently, so they did choose where to place it. And are choosing where they would like to see their proposed accessory building. So for me, I had to determine that that was more of a preference of the applicant. The minimum variance or the other criteria is to consider if this is the minimum variance possible to make happen what they're looking to do. And it did seem that they put it as far from the property line as they thought that they could to achieve what they were looking to achieve. The final two is if the granting of the variance would be injurious to neighbors. It is a little close to the north side property. I don't know if it would necessarily be injurious to them, but it would be closer than is typically required. And that neighbor to the north side also submitted comment for you to reference. The intended use of the property or the condition of the situation on this specific piece, you know, we consider if should we change the zoning ordinance to meet the needs or is this more of a unique situation? I would say this is more of a unique situation based on the applicant's request. So when we do look at those findings, fortunately, I wasn't able to determine that all of that criteria was met. So I have a recommendation that the permit be denied this evening. But should the ZBA look to consider the variance, you know, I would recommend a couple of conditions just to lessen that impact on neighboring properties for you to consider. I did propose possibility of having some landscape screening to the neighbors to the north. And that the dwell, the accessory building, if approved, wouldn't be used for a dwelling space or to operate a business. So that is the summary. Do you guys have questions?
Members have questions?
Yes. Having reviewed some of the photos and been out to the site, it appears there's significant earthwork that has happened.
Yeah, I was made aware of that today. Yes.
Has there been, obviously with that earthwork, there's no wetlands to worry about?
Not that I was aware of. We didn't have a need for a soil erosion permit, but that typically comes in with the building application.
So having seen the volume of dirt that's moved in preparation for it, there's nothing, no encumbrance that would forbid them from adding additional soils to create a further back-
Correct.
Pad behind the house or closer to the house, but but behind that elevator, that that line of sight. Okay, just to make sure there's no wetlands.
Oh, I did also want to know, I did speak with the building department about ADA compliance and those sorts of things of what they look into. ADA compliance typically applies to just commercial buildings and not residential buildings if that was a concern for any of you.
Board members have questions?
Yeah, just message, just to clear, this is the new house that's being built, right? When you turn, you go out thirty-six, you turn right on Cherry Lane, you go down a little ways and it's off to the left.
Yes, there's three vacant parcels. One has a house currently being built.
Yeah, and that's it, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right one.
Okay, representative today, is it somebody from Epic Homes?
I believe they're both here and they're, they will choose who is representing today. Are you ready for an applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the applicant please come forward? Please give us your name.
I'm Troy Shrock with Epic Homes and this is Scott Schrutenbor, the homeowner. So thanks for, okay, so again, look at that. On this map, I wanted to show you, we thought through everything on this, obviously with the situation. You can see that. So obviously, these are topo lines. These are ten foot between this one and this one. And then another ten foot down there. So the only way, if we would put it back, he would never be able to get to it, you know, in the winter time. So the whole purpose of that is obviously to get a walkout site where this side drops so he can have an elevator get down to play with his kids in the backyard. The only other place was along this side that was high enough. And we did lower it from where the garage is so it wouldn't be as visible. We tried to attempt to do that because that was the flatter area. Obviously, it's behind this barn, so we thought it wouldn't stick out to neighbors over in here as much, you know, from line of sight, even from the house there. But mainly, we did it because in order to do this drive on a grade that he could get to was the main purpose of doing that, so he could get up and down and play, you know, in there with his kids. The other thing is we're asking for three foot of height. If it was three foot less per the code thing, we don't have to be ten foot off the property line. And that's just so he could shoot hoops in there with as much as kids shoes and play.
Okay, so there would be a driveway connecting the main drive down to-
Yeah.
The barn, I'll call it.
Yeah, and it's still pretty long. I mean, but it was the only way to do it, you know, to get there.
Loop it down and around.
Yeah, yeah. At a grade where he could get up it.
Mr. Schrutenbor, any comments?
No, you, excuse me, you, I think you've read my letter and just explaining why, you know, why are, why do we want to do this? And again, to Troy's point, to be able to get out there and be with my kids, that's what we're doing the walkout. You know, obviously, I didn't choose to be in this situation.
Car accident?
Deer. I was, I'm a deer hunter and I fell off a tree stand three years ago. But I live in Tamron. I live right across the street. Been over to your house, seen the train.
Okay.
Yeah, so you know, our intel has never moved. We've been in Tamron for nineteen years and we've never intended to move. So this unfortunately, because of the accident, has kind of forced move to move from a two-story to, as Troy said again, to a walkout basement. So, you know, this is just giving me the opportunity to be able to spend more time with my kids, be able to get outside. You know, in winter time, it's impossible to exercise outside. This gives me an opportunity to do that. So that's and again, as Troy was saying too, it does drop off. And so we put it, we were thinking that we'd like it there. Just so I don't have to work so hard to get to, to the barn and be able to move and be outside, even in the winter time. I will have easier access to the barn from the house. So.
Okay, okay. Well, I was out there today. It's a beautiful house. I mean, this is really quite stunning, I think. And I'm glad I gave up deer hunting fifteen years ago. Any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Hey Troy, Mr. Schrutenbor.
Hi.
I don't know if you've talked to this particular neighbor. One of the neighbors has some concerns that, that concerns us. So first question is, you know, one of their concerns is that there appears to be more property between the home in the pole barn than the pole barn in their property line. And I'm assuming that's, that's maybe true. Is there any reason that you pushed it that far back to put it that close to the, to the, to the property line?
Yeah, the reason is we have a side low garage so he can get around, you know, into his garage. Obviously, with his truck, we have to make that a forty-foot turn to get into there. And then that's at a different level. So then we did it to lower that level. So we need to have some grade to be able to get the water from the barn to go this way and the stuff coming from the driveway. So it goes out the back.
I'm glad you mentioned water because water retention, water retention is a huge issue in the township. And especially the last decade, we've had a lot of issues with building and then water runoff. And one of the, one of the concerns of the neighbors is that the water, this could exacerbate water runoff onto their property. Any?
Yeah, we're, I don't know the exact measurement, but we're probably like four or five foot in that, above that property line from that twenty-one feet. So it shouldn't be an issue once we get grass in there at all. So the left side of the barn that's closest to that north property is only like four, probably five feet up from that, but that's over twenty-one feet.
Okay, so you don't think, because again, in residential and in commercial areas, we've had a lot of water runoff into other properties and it's the people on those other properties who then become the victims, if you will.
Yeah.
And so that, you know, we just want to do everything we can to mitigate anything like that. So you don't-
Once we get landscaping and stuff in there, that won't be an issue.
And then the third, one, the residents also talked about, as did Madison, about having some landscape screening to the north. Have you, is that something you'd be amenable to?
Yeah.
Putting some landscaping in?
The other thing we could do is create a berm right on the property line, small berm that makes sure that it goes back. We just did that on our property in Ada, so we can-
They were talking about putting in some evergreens just to break up because, you know, we hear that a lot from residents as well.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Back to the, the water runoff. I mean, we're talking about a significant surface area impervious. So a sloped roof, we've got what, twenty by sixty four linear feet of area that's going to be sloped to that north direction. On a heavy rain, that, that's not just going to soak in over a seventeen to twenty-foot flow down towards that neighboring property line. You're going to have to capture that and direct it back onto the property at some point. Whether that's gutter system, whether that's a berm, there's just no way-
We could definitely do a gutter system along there or a berm. I mean, it's definitely possible.
Okay, it does slope to the east from there as well. It doesn't all only slope to the north.
My assumption with your location of the house is that you had probably a difficult time perking the property.
Well, that was a problem in the beginning, but that's way up front. It's more to get the walkout of where we put it in order to get the walkout for him to be able to use that lower level.
And then obviously with, with the perk, you obviously know then the soils are pretty heavy.
Yeah.
So it's not, they're going to soak in quick. So you're, the idea of retaining the water in something to let it set, you know, soak in. I mean, I would, I would obviously be more comfortable saying, why not just move this building back? So that you do have a clear, clear turn into the driveway. You have a direct approach into the garage. You have your elevation changes instead of from house to side, you'd have from house to back of property.
Still going to be the same issue on that whole side all the way back because it drops off.
It is a potential issue, but you've moved a significant quantity of dirt to prep a pad already. This isn't just a flat spot. That pad is built, ready to build a building.
Yeah.
Knowing that the property line was right there. I understand the reluctance to say, let's just move the pad over there because that's a significant cost in doing it. But you've moved dirt to create a pad for a building on a topography challenge already. So there's really nothing that stops you from correcting that location with a new location for the pad.
But keep in mind that the location that was chosen was for the accessibility factor.
Yeah, the longer it goes back, he'll never be able, because it goes down, he'd never be able to get up that hill.
Right.
And, and it would block, obviously, the neighbor here would see it more. The neighbor here would see it more, the more that it's back here because their view to their, through their house is this way. So we're behind that big silver barn.
I guess as, as was mentioned, the, the idea of because the variance is on the side adjacent to a property owner with concerns, we were sympathetic to that property owner as well in understanding what kind of compromises make it viable in the current situation. And with that said, you know, we would, we would want to know what type of means you're going to collect the water and retain it on the property so it doesn't do a direct runoff. And two, what kind of landscaping you'd propose to suffice for the neighbor to appease them in, in making sure that they're comfortable with.
I think we can easily do the berm and if that doesn't work, we could put the gutter on. But I don't think that's going to be an issue. Or we could do both. It wouldn't be that difficult. A small berm would channel all that water.
I, I think a berm is without a doubt probably your best bet because then it's a permanent.
Yeah.
It does collect it.
Yes, if I can ask a question too, because I didn't see the concerns from the other neighbor. So if we move the barn back, is the concern the water runoff or?
Well, you, I think honestly, as just a general person, a, a construction of a project that does direct water onto a property is a concern in general. And because you have the heavy soils, no matter what, I, from a neighborly perspective, whether you were fifty feet or whether you were ten feet, anything channeling onto their property is going to be either an issue today or three years from now.
Right.
So.
And I respect that.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I mean, you guys are going to be neighbors for a long time.
Oh, absolutely, right.
And that's why I just, where's the common ground?
Yeah, not getting off on the wrong foot, right?
No, that's what, you know, and I just, I'd love to see a compromise between both parties that's satisfactory to alleviate any concerns and issues. Yeah, so I don't know if that's a resolution for today or if it's, because it did come to light today. So.
I think our concern is, just a couple of years ago, we went through with this problem with another development, Round Hill, where they had a serious erosion problem and it ended up in a lawsuit action by a neighbor to that property to say, stop this, do something to control the erosion. And they, they did finally put in a retaining wall. It stopped it. That's, that's our concern.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw the letter from the neighbors, but you know, that they, you know, they sent some photos to us and they said, we're also worried about the water runoff coming onto our property. Because of this, we plan on getting livestock and making that pasture and really do not want a pond developing from all the, the water runoff. And it, and as, you know, Chairman Mockley said, you know, we had a situation a few years ago where we had this exact problem and it really became a serious issue and a lawsuit that finally got resolved. But it was a water runoff issue, probably in a more serious with a much bigger grade than what, what, you know, you guys are up against. But we're just, we, we want to make sure there's a water retention plan or something in place to prevent that from going onto the neighbors.
And, and we have no problem with that, putting a berm along here. I will say, this whole big roof line of this barn comes to our property right now. So I mean, all this funnels onto the back end of our property right now.
But that's an existing condition, not being created.
Correct, yeah.
And you know, if that had been a problem, you may have said, I don't know if I want to buy that property at that line. Let's redirect the lines.
Yeah.
We, we, we all want to come up with, with a compromise that, that's good to all parties. And what the zoning board especially, just to give you a little background, you know, we're really cautious about setting precedent. And so we want to make sure that everybody is, is done right. We find the exceptions. We document the exceptions just so we don't have a problem in the future. Because we all know what's better to prevent than to cure.
Yeah.
Right.
And we don't want somebody coming back to us in a year and saying, well, you gave Mr. Schrutenbor this thing. Why don't you give it to me, you know? So that's why we're concerned.
Yeah.
Other board members have other questions? Valerie or Lou?
Answer.
Okay.
So one last question to, to the applicant. If, if a berm is a viable solution, you'd be willing to move forward with that?
Agreed, yeah.
And if, in addition to that, landscaping was an agreeable condition? And to what extent, I don't know. And to what extent, I don't know. Um, is that something that you'd be agreeable to?
Yeah, can I just ask a question? As far as the landscaping goes, um, what's the, is there concern that they'd? Look at, have to look at the?
Uh, it's, I don't think, based on the letter, I don't necessarily think it's because you can see it. I think it's because it's that much closer. That much higher, that the volume of something in the middle of a field with no. Vegetation around it is just going to stick out. That's probably the concern. So you have your, you have your pad set. Right now there's a runoff from it. Your property line is, in addition to that, it's close. So not only is it bigger than normal, which is your next. Request, but you also have something that much closer to the property that's just going to stand out. So.
They said their concerns, they'll see it from many angles and would like very mature fifteen, twenty foot.
Evergreens.
Yeah, so it is. Um, concerned about seeing it from a lot of different perspectives according to.
Okay, any other questions for Troy or Mr. Schrute and Board?
I'm sure they'll answer them if we have them later. Thanks, guys.
I'd like to now, uh, entertain a motion. We'll go to a public hearing.
Move it, go into public case.
And support it. All in favor, say aye. We are now open to receive comments either online or from the audience. Please come forward, give us your name and your address.
My name is Kristen Shidel. My husband is Lance Shidel and we live at eight, four, nine, four. Um, thirty-sixth street and we are the adjacent property directly to the north of the, um. The proposed setback, um, variance that they're asking for. Um, sorry, I get really nervous when I talk publicly. Um, so I guess just a couple of things I wanted to mention. I'm sure you guys read my letter that I sent in. We, we've just, we've been watching months worth of excavation going on and. Um, you know, we're very pleased that the beautiful home is going up there. And we're, you know, very fine with having a barn. We bought our property. Very shortly after they bought their lot or land parcel, um. And we bought it because of all the barns, because we want to eventually restore them and we love that. Um, so we totally get that and we want to be good neighbors. We haven't met them. We really do want to be good neighbors. So it's very difficult to be in opposition of something. Because we don't want to make that be our first, um, interaction. But we decided that we wanted to come forward because we just feel like there's other options. I don't really understand all of the land variations as far as the topography. Um, but I do know for one thing that our large historical barn, um. That roof line, all that water runs directly down to the east of our property. And it is solid clay. We just recently put a drain filled in and we had to go almost twenty feet deep. Which was a big surprise, but, um. So the water, this, this fall with all of the water we've had, we can have. A small puddle that's five by five and it'll hold that water for a week before it's, it soaks in. It's, it's terrible clay. Um, so we have dealt with the water already just on our property. But my biggest concern, oh, back to what I was. So what I was going to say is I'd like to propose. Um, you know, possibly them putting it on the other side. I see there's ninety-nine feet between. The west side, or no, I'm sorry, the south side of their house and the lot line. And, um, you know, I think it would fit fine there or behind the house. Um, we've come to find out that there, I believe there's an elevator put, being put in the home. And I'm very sympathetic to the fact that there are challenges, no doubt. Um, but in our eyes, we feel like the elevator could take you down to the, the walkout level. And then you could have your barn right there behind the house. So how, how much more convenient would that be? Um, I invite you to come out and look at the site. It looks like Erin did that already. But if, okay, but if you can, you know, it's fairly flat. I mean, it's a long, narrow lot, but it is fairly flat. Um, so I think that there are just better options to place that barn.
Chris, can I just ask, what are your thoughts about if they can put in a water retention plan with a berm there? To keep the water from running on, you know, off the property, is that?
So again, um, that is probably honestly our biggest concern. I mean, we don't like the idea that it's that far into our. Into the setback, um, but that's probably our biggest concern. Yes, because again, if you, if you go out and look at that site and you are standing on our property on our lot line. And our land is flat from the historical barn to the south lot line. If you're standing there. There's probably a, um. I, I find it hard to believe there's even twenty-one feet between our lot line and where that is built up. But it's a, it's a massive berm that they've built. And I would say it's probably a thirty degree to fit that size of barn in that area. Um, the barn has to go basically between the driveway and our lot line. So to fit it there and it's prepped, so it's easy to see. Um, that's probably a thirty degree angle over fifteen feet at the most. I would also definitely ask for a survey to be done prior to anything being built there. Um, because it seems like it's very close, but maybe our, maybe our, um, we have not moved the corner posts of our lot. So maybe those posts have been moved. I don't know. Um, so maybe it is farther off.
You mean a survey before they would put in a berm for, for water retention?
Well, for any building there actually. I don't want to wait till a building's erected. We've had that.
Well, I would assume that before they submitted the plans to the building department, they, they had to have had a survey along with it.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I, I, I don't know, was that?
They haven't submitted a building application formally yet because they're looking at getting these approvals prior to.
So if you come out and look at it and you're standing facing east on our property line. It's quite a tall berm where they want to put the, the barn and the. Decline from theirs down to ours is very swift in a very short span. So it's going to create a huge pond there and we do want to hopefully in the spring get some livestock and create, and have pastures and. House those barns with livestock. So, um, we just don't want it to be, um, a muddy mess and a huge pond all the time. So that is our primary concern is this, the runoff. Um, there's no way any water from our property is getting on theirs because their property. The barn has been excavated to sit at least, I'd say, five feet. That's being quite, I think, conservative, but. Up on that first berm and then their house sits above that another several feet. So there's no water getting on. You know, their land that I can imagine from our barn. Um, our barns have been over there for over a hundred years and that's actually why we bought the property because we knew. We would have loved to bought a vacant land, but, um, we looked at the township guidelines and we knew that we couldn't get a big barn by doing that. So we're rehabbing a hundred and thirty year old house. So, um. Yeah, so that's mainly it. I, you know.
So the runoff is the primary concern and then probably the. Landscaping would be second.
It'd be second, um. I really have not taken a look at how, you know, this barn is going to sit there. I didn't see a picture of it. Um, I didn't realize until today that the variance was going to go in for it being much larger, but, um. That being so close to our property line makes it harder also, um. I just assumed it was going to be the standard barn, uh, for the, for the township under their guidelines. So I guess I would, if the township was to approve it, I would definitely ask for something in place, some sort of a system. I'd first ask that you come out and you visually look and see how close that is and how much water is going to come off that berm. And then, um, my concern is I don't even think there's room to put trees. They'd be coming up on an angle like this. You'd have to plant those trees. Um, but if you found a way to do that, I would, I would recommend or I would ask that. You, they planted trees along the property line, the length of it. And we actually just did six, they're between sixteen and eighteen foot trees. Um, in the front of our house, we had them put in. It can be done, Everett's landscape does it. Um, and they shielded us from the road because you can hear the road when cars come around that curve and. And it looks much nicer too. So we brought in these very mature trees. So that would be my recommendation that they not be like this, that they be big, mature trees.
I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I was out there. I did, uh, visited and I walked around. Number one, the topography we are seeing shows the existing situation. Uh, before any work was done. And I, I agree with the other member who said, we really need a survey. I think you should also mention, we need a survey of exactly what we're dealing with here. Uh, it does drop off rapidly to the, on the north side. The second thing I'd mention is. A berm is actually going to make it worse, uh, because it's just going to make this steep hill go higher. And more water is going to run up. South side of the berm will be redirected. But the stuff on the, the water on the north side is just going to add to the flow off to the north.
I'm not in favor of a berm just because of that reason. And like I said, if you come out and look at it, I don't know that there's room for a berm. There's already a huge berm. So how are you, you'd have to go up fifteen feet, you know what I mean? And then have a big gully and then back up again to the pole barn. So, sorry. Um, I guess that, that would be my request is that you just come out and look at it. And I'd love to come to an agreement with them. Like I said, we want to have a good relationship, but we just think that there are other options that wouldn't affect us as much.
Any other questions from board members for Kristen?
Thank you.
Yeah, actually one more. Kristen, um, a- as you've watched the house be built, and maybe this is more of a question for Troy. But was all the site planned done at one time or was the house built backfilled and then this pad built secondary to that?
Um, the house, was it done at once? I mean, it was months and months of excavation. So I don't know. I don't remember. There was just so much.
To say then that the pad was built after the house backfill was done?
Yeah, once we saw where the house, we had to place the house and did the walkout and then we tried to turn it after that.
He's side loaded here.
That is a survey on that.
So that's the delay. That's, that's the forty foot swing he's talking about.
I mean, a physical, a physical.
Any other questions for Kristen? Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to come forward? Give us your name. Anybody online?
Okay, I'd like to ask, is it, I, I guess this is, this is a question for, um. For Troy and probably, you know, for Mr. Schrute, Schrute and Board. Is it possible to put together, uh. A water retention plan that we could see before approval?
Can I ask that they come to the microphone just for the sake of minutes? It's not, we're not able to hear, just sorry.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Um, you know, the, when we're talking berm, we're not talking big berm along that property. What we did in Ada on the property where it was similar, there was a barn next to that house that we just built and we worked with it engineer. And it's just a little bump that creates the water not to go on their property. It won't restrict theirs and then we create, we could even put drains in there, make sure it drains out.
I'm talking about something ten feet high.
No, no, it's only, it's only two feet high. That's what we did on that. It totally took care of it.
So I know you've been around the block, so you know what, what the issues are and I understand, um. Is i- i- if, if we waited to get a water retention plan, is, is that going to be a serious delay if we had to wait another? A month while you did this or how, how quickly could you put together a water retention plan?
I would have to ask my engineer to, I don't know, but probably a week. But we were hoping to get it approved because then we got to get the next approval, you know, on that, um. So, but I, I honestly think we could control that water and the lands and still do that. It's twenty-one feet.
Would it help if Kristen could take a look at that job you did in Ada?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can show you that, what that looks like.
We try to make sure that we, we, that we have that, that the unique exceptions and the water retention is going to be the big one. Um, if we approve this with the condition that they have to have water retention, uh, and a. And, and Madison, who, who would review the water retention? Would Building Department?
We could have our township engineer, uh, review it alongside me. Eric Thorn.
Yeah, Eric could look at that.
He could, yeah.
Good. So if we had our township engineer, um, review a plan that they put together. And we, we put the condition that it had to be, the water retention plan had to be approved by township engineer, would that? Make you comfortable? More comfortable?
Yeah, I, I was a bit about that. That would, um. That would definitely, I mean, is, I don't know how that works. Like what if it was approved and then it didn't work? Like what?
Well, then you would, then, well, then the, I know, we don't like to go down that path either. Um. We would assume that would work and if it wouldn't, then they would have to ameliorate the problem. They'd have to fix it somehow. They'd have to build another water retention plan because now if, if we've required them to build a water retention. And it, and it fails, it's their responsibility, not yours, to make sure that they fix it. I'm sure Mr. Schrute and Board would.
Does that involve, would that involve us having to litigate for that?
Not likely. Um, at worst possible case, yes, but it's more likely the township would be able to step in and say.
As a condition.
As a condition of the, the variants and you, you failed that condition, you've got to go back and meet it.
And then I would also ask that the mature evergreens be brought in because. I just think that that would be, you know, if you're going to put that size of barn that close to our property line. We would prefer to have it shielded somewhat.
Okay, anything else, uh, for the public hearing? Anybody else have comments? I'd like a motion to close public hearing.
I pointed it while we're in public hearing, just ask Mr. Schrute and Board, is that something that's feasible, putting in the trees? That's amenable to you for the variance because we, you know, we, we, we want to find exceptional conditions. In place, exceptional conditions, so we don't set a precedent. And the precedent would be, of course, the water retention plan, which is pretty critical. But also the, uh, the tree line. Is that something that would be feasible?
Yes, I understand the tree line. What the need for the tree line is, um, excuse me, just from. The point that we have, like, um, like she was saying, we have ten acres there. And we're a good distance away. I'm not sure what the trees would accomplish.
Your, your statement is, is accurate. It's a good distance. It's not a legal distance. The legal distance is not being met right now.
So what, yeah, great. Okay, thank you. So what does this?
So, so it's as a condition of them giving up. Not necessarily giving up, it's them agreeing to. The variance request of you not meeting the ordinance as it's written. The, the other option is a flat out denial and then either you move to meet the ordinance or you don't build. It's, it's, it's black and white at that point.
And, and, and I'd, let me just come back again and try to find the compromise here. Is it? More of the landscaping to soften it? Uh, I wanted to ask Mr. Shidel, the, the landscaping itself as opposed to specifically saying, you know, evergreens. A row of evergreens. I mean, they might build, there's some landscaping that's, that's.
It's so that we don't see it.
Yeah, I mean.
Um, I mean, the problem is, is it's not like it's just flat. They built up such a large berm to place it that it's going to be, you know, high. And yeah, I get it. We can't see it if we're standing in front of our historical barn, but we're going to be out there in the pastures and everything too. So. You know, I like their, I, I like to not have to see it.
I mean, evergreens go, not grow fast.
As, as Troy the Builder had mentioned, an option, uh. Is, is physically if you moved it back and around, you're going to move more dirt. And around, you're going to move more dirt. If you, as long as you meet the. Forty foot side yard setback, it's the same structure. If his pad is. Five feet above current elevation, it's still the same. Building sitting up on the same visual berm. It's further back straight to you. It needs the forty foot setback. The variance no longer becomes a question mark.
So there is a slow break down towards the marsh on the east side. So. I don't, you know, I I can't see there being a problem if it was forty feet of our lot. And down there, we would not see it as much. You know, it would be our.
But the question being, there's there's no. There's no criteria for to say to them, you have to build down there. He could build, he could bring in. Two thousand cubic yards of dirt and build a nice. Elevated pad.
Really air, it's still on the property. Um, it's just. You know, it's just that it's within a setback and we would prefer to have that setback unless. We have a little bump.
And we would connect. We would be totally agreeable with those trees there, absolutely. Um, I think um to your point of you are. Sensitive to the the needs of a wheelchair. Appreciate the same thought, but I don't think anybody gets it unless they're in this situation. And for him to be able to go out and play with our youngest son, play basketball with him in the rain and all the things. Currently in our house now, he has to find out why you can't. Park inside. And so average of its nose, averaging the rain. We are out there with a umbrella helping him. And so this is what he's been waiting for and sure and willing. And so. If it means doing the water retention thing, if it means planting trees, we will absolutely, we also want to be good neighbors. Um, but I do think. It's hard to understand the person's life in a wheelchair unless he was it. And if we're putting it further back, he's he's not going to be able to go there. And then we'll, I don't know what we're going to do.
Yes, I'm for me.
I I can. With true sympathy, I I hear every word you're saying. The dilemma would be, no one has a crystal ball. In one year, you guys decide, you know what? We're selling. You sell. And. John Doe moves in. And says, awesome, I got this barn and I'm going to do this, this and this. This whole discussion is is irrelevant at that point. The ordinance was not necessarily written. As a. Disability ordinance. It was written for the public as a whole. And that's why we're trying to s- stay here with open eyes and what's best for the entire community.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Any anybody else like to make comments? Come forward. Please give us your name.
Name is Jack Holst, um. Neighbor across the street from them. Thirty seven seventeen Cherry Lane. Um. Been in the excavating business for forty some years, so I know grades. Um. I just wanted to make a point. I know the Shidel's very well. I've done a lot of work for them over the last couple of months. Stroke Moore is I know from history, know his dad. So there's connection for both. Parties here for me.
Great.
Um, so I'm not trying to be a mediator, but I am trying to define. Something that you've been talking about is this drainage. Uh, retention. When I think of retention. It's a pond that's going to hold water. From runoff and then disperse it from there. Is that what you're talking about? Or are we talking about a swale of some sort to control the? The water to stay on the property line until it can be diverted into the backyard of Stroke Moore's.
I think that's the the direction. It's not.
When you say retention.
Yeah.
That's not retaining it. That's directing it.
It's the redirect so that it doesn't do it. In my eyes, I see. A downpour, I see the half of the pole barn. Twenty by sixty four, collecting water, running off on a four twelve, five twelve pitch. Fourteen feet up, hitting the ground. And moving soil immediately. From now for the next five years and it's going straight down that hill.
Now.
By the way, you sir, you're you're correct about the terminology of water retention.
Yeah.
You are exactly right. We we do typically mean you hold it there so it doesn't. But I think the better verbiage is what water.
Water direction, directing the water to a point.
Yeah, because this is not.
Disperse it across a wide area.
Soil, I can't imagine it. Toking in as and she brings up a great point. You got a five by five. Puddle of water there and it sits there for months on end.
Right. So the other issue is you say the water is going to come off half that shed ha- off the roof, half of that. I would assume that you're going to put down spouts and eavesdroves up. To direct that water to the back, correct? There's always a lot of that waters, water situation. If you have a two inch rain or an inch or quarter inch. It's not coming off the roof. Down on the soil anymore.
Correct. I don't disagree with you. Just nothing's illustrated on the drawing.
No, that's why I'm defining that because you ma- made that mention that that water off the roof is going to come down, hit the ground. And runoff and it will.
Yep.
If it's not controlled. So there's another control, water control situation. So I'm just putting my two cents worth in here. They can both shoot me in the back if they want, but uh.
We appreciate it.
Thought I'd uh try to help that out, but I I do think that the water that does shed off from that slope. Can be controlled at the property line. With a swale of some kind rather than a berm on the top. Because the berm on the top probably is not going to control the whole slope. Runoff.
It may just make the slope even worse.
To a to a certain extent, yes, right. But. I think if if you control it at the property line. Now you've got a swale there that's running that water to the back. Bottom line.
Diverting it.
Diverting it. And then letting it spread out as it goes.
Dare I ask you a professional question?
You can try. I don't know if I'll answer it late, but.
A five foot elevation change in a. Eighty by one hundred. Consists of how many cubic yards roughly?
Hmm. You've got me on that one because I'm not an engineer, so I can't do the calculations, but. Um.
I'm just curious.
Now bear in mind that that slope is going to have grass on it probably, which will slow your water flow. I know that much.
I'm just curious from a pad perspective, the volume of of soils in that.
That I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holst.
Okay, sorry.
Any other comments from the audience? I'd like to entertain a motion to close public hearing. They moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, discussion among the board members. And I'm open to a proposal.
I uh would like to make a comment that. My initial take, and this is just. Uh, first blush is that we're dealing with ten point two acres here of a new construction. Of a new project that is not. A raw piece of dirt being brought to our table for a question. It's a existing pad. That's been created. Um. A certain distance from the property line. So. With that said, I think we're dealing with not what was there. Prior to construction, which is topography. Uh, illustration that was presented, but what we're dealing with is a situation of what's been created. As of today, and that's what we're being asked. Should a variance be granted on that condition?
This changed the lots.
That's what I'd like to, that's what I'd like to start my comment with. Okay. I'll reserve right to have further comment.
Other comments? Valerie, Luke?
No, well, I think we're looking at two things here. The the first is, what are the exceptional conditions? To that we would consider to grant a variance. And the second is, um. Since there is a. Violation, if you will, of the ordinance, not following the ordinance. What would be the um? Compromise that we that we feel. That would work for the applicant as well as the neighbors. Um. If we provide the variance. And I think we've come up with um coming up with a. A water uh control and direction plan, which is better suited. Better language, not not a water retention per se, but a water control and direction plan. Um, reviewed by township engineer. To ensure that the water doesn't move on to the neighbor's property. Um. And second, um. Some type of landscaping um to block the view, which the applicant said they'd be willing to do. Which would likely be some evergreen trees being planted there. And the applicant is shaking their head that they agree to those things. So a couple of the 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 exceptional conditions. That I would find is that um. O- obviously, um. Due to. The the variance is is unique. Would be uniquely being granted due to the um personal needs of the applicant. Um. Because of this this paralysis, which is which is a pretty exceptional condition. But as. Aaron pointed out, if you guys decided to leave in a year, it doesn't. Prevent the next person from coming in. But I think that that's a pretty, pretty unique exception. Um. And considering the nature of the property, um, is is pretty exceptional. My second concern then is to make sure we get a compromise so everybody's happy and. You guys share chocolate, hot chocolate in the winter and, you know, do so happily. Maybe a glass of wine now and then, but maybe hot chocolate would be better. Um. Are we moving down the right path here? I'm I'm seeing heads bobbing and I, that's a good thing. Because we always like to take in. Consideration. All the sides. And and I know that Troy is a very skilled professional builder. Um, with a great reputation. So I I I have a lot of confidence in the applicant. In in Mr. Rock. So with that, um.
Do you like to make a motion?
I like to make a motion. That we grant variance with staff's conditions that the building have landscape screening. From the property to the north, uh, the evergreen trees being planted on the property line.
Due to that.
Um. I don't want to make it onerous, but I don't want to make it like one tree. You know, I'm thinking probably four or five trees at a minimum. So what you think it would?
Do you have a size?
Grow.
Is there a size requirement for the plantings?
Um. Well. You know, my neighbors planted some evergreens several, a couple decades ago that were three feet tall and now they're forty feet tall. So I mean, they grow really fast. I I would think that it would use a ten foot evergreen is going to grow pretty darn fast. Would you agree, Troy? You do this more than I do. So we would hope in the range of.
Do we want to consider a landscaping plan?
I would feel better about that. Let's go something.
Wait, we're not in public hearing.
We're not in public hearing, sorry.
So, um. I I I trust the applicant. I mean, I understand. We want to plan, but I think if we're going to put the owner onus on them, that the building should have landscaping screening to the north. I would say um no less than five. Evergreens. At ten feet tall or or higher, the building not be used for dwelling space or to operate a business. And that a water control and direction plan. We put in place by the applicant and reviewed by the township engineer.
Do you want that prior to permits being issued or anything?
Um, yeah, because I think they can get it in time. Yes.
I'd like to supplement it by saying I think we need a survey of the existing condition.
Well, and we would also, yeah, a a survey would be included that, but I think that we've already been, it's already been surveyed, so. And so with that last condition, that there also be a survey included.
Okay.
Further discussion or amendments?
Is it five trees?
No, no less than.
Ten foot height.
Ten foot height evergreen.
And a water control and direction plan. Um, put forth by the applicant. Yeah, reviewed by township, that's the township engineer. With a survey.
Member me, any comment?
Yes, I guess I just still struggle with seeing ten point two acres of land that's. That in. An easy look is. Yes, we're holding back, it would appear sixty feet from the garage doors in order to get the sweep into the garage, but. They're just, from a construction perspective, there's just nothing holding me back from thinking that the the pole barn wouldn't be moved further. Um. Further to the east and further south at that point to meet the the side yard setbacks. It it just seems.
Let me ask.
It seems in my mind that there's nothing physically. Topography wise, driving that it can't be moved other than the cost to move dirt. Because dirt has already been moved. Dirt's going to be moved again. There's a cost to five trees. There's a cost to resurveying. So the. The pluses and minuses of spending money on this for spending money on that start washing each other out. The net result could be close to just move. The building to where it conforms to the setback requirements and. This meeting becomes mute and irrelevant. So I I would, I would. I I struggle. With.
We're not in public hearing, but we'd like to ask the applicant if that's. Why that is or isn't feasible. Aaron, that.
Can you come to the microphone to answer questions too? Thank you.
Mr. Rock?
I mean, Troy, the general statement would be it's it's fifteen hundred cubic yards. Of a five foot high, eighty by a hundred pad. It's.
Yep, I get what you're saying. The biggest issue for us is you could see this is the line where the highest point of that lot was. We did not change that grade at the where this tree line is here. That is the grade of the house. Okay, so that we didn't carve that. The only way carved out was back here to get the walkout for him. Is what we did there. The more you go back, that's a ten foot drop. I mean, he'll never be able to get to it. In a wheelchair. I mean, so that's the reason we're asking for it and the location was just to get that. If we go back and make compliance. I mean, I still think it's more visible for all these neighbors back here too, because right now it's behind this barn. And that was the other thought, but the main reason was is we go back, he'll, in the winter, he'll never get to it.
Thank you, Troy. I'd like to ask Madison to read back to us what the motion is. Carefully make sure we all agree.
What you just presented?
Yes.
So you presented a motion to approve the variance of a twenty one foot setback from the north property line. Um, with a. Condition set of one being no less than five trees planted on the north side of the building. With a minimum of ten foot height, that the building not be used for a dwelling space or to operate a business. And that a water diversion control plan be submitted and reviewed by the township engineer prior to building permits being issued. And that would include a survey.
Anything else, uh? Aaron or Tom? Okay, I'd like to ask for a vote on this.
We don't have a second yet, so.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And that was a aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Those not in favor signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Order one, motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business?
Our next meeting would be December twelfth. I currently don't have any applications, so it will likely be canceled, but I can confirm that in the following weeks.
Okay, twelve, twelve. Okay, I'd just like to mention, uh. The Moxleys are having a model railroad open house uh on the day after Thanksgiving. Please feel free to come and bring uh the family. You're welcome to come in. Okay, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.